Welcome everyone to the August 18, 2020, meeting of the Town of Walpole Select Board. With the time being 7:04, we'll call the meeting to order and start as we do with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I would also remind everybody that we're operating under the order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting, GLC 30A, Section 20, the order which was effective immediately upon being issued, has not been rescinded, state of emergency is still in effect. So we will announce all members and we'll vote via roll call for each one of our proceedings as authorized under remote participation for public boards due to emergency declaration. With that being said, in the time being 7:06, the first item on our, on our agenda for today is the public hearing for all alcohol common victualist license for Gregoriatus Inc. Jim Johnson, anything to add here as far as the paperwork or input before we open the public hearing?
No, everything's in order. This is the second one we've done with Eva in the office and Eva, we're not missing anything. I think we're all good, right?
Yep, we've received everything on this end.
Fantastic, fantastic. Thanks Eva. Alright, so I would hear a motion to open the public hearing. Oh, you're muted Nancy. You're muted.
Sorry. Alright, here we go. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the all alcohol common vic by Giorgio Dialis Inc. doing business as GG Pizza Company.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. We'll proceed via roll call vote going in order. Jim O'Neill?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And David?
Aye.
And Ben?
Aye.
So the public hearing is now open. And who do we have here? I'm sorry, we have about 18 people on here. Who do we have here for to speak to this item? From the pizza company?
Hi, I'm Sarkis Gregoriatus, President.
Oh, hey Sarkis, alright, thank you. Alright, see you there. Hi, how are you? Good, good. So we've seen you before. I remember you coming before us. If you could just give us a, just a brief rundown of who you are and what you're looking to do here, that would be very good. Thanks.
So I recently came in for some like permit to open up the pizza shop here. Things been okay, doing well, and I just a lot of customers asking for beer and wine license. Hang on one second, please. Sorry about that. Hold on, are we there?
Go ahead, yeah, you got your.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is my first one of these meetings, so I don't want to mess anything up. I hit too many buttons. So yeah, I got a lot of customers, you know, I eventually planned on applying for a beer and wine license and so forth. A lot of customers have been asking me, so I figured this might be a good time to do it.
Great, great. Alright, thank you. Alright, so we'll open up to any comments from the board. We'll go in order. Jim O'Neill?
I just would say glad to see you doing this and hopefully we'll be, there'll be a day when we'll be able to come inside your establishment and enjoy what you got going on there. So thanks for coming here tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that.
Great, thanks Jim. Nancy McKenney?
I'm all set. All the paperwork looks good. Thank you.
Great. Mark?
I would just say congratulations. I hear you're doing well and I think this will be a good thing for you. And I wish you good luck. I'm in favor of this and the paperwork looks good.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that.
Great. And David? Any comment, David?
I have a couple of questions. It says that this license came from special legislation. Where did this license come from?
I can answer that if it's okay.
Go ahead Eva, thank you.
Yeah, so this is under special legislation, Chapter 180 of 2016. It was, I believe, five licenses in total that were requested, three for the downtown area and two for the Route 1 highway.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, great. Thank you Eva. Alright, so we'll go ahead with our, our vote. We'll do a roll call vote.
The public hearing?
Yes, I would accept a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you Nancy. And I'll second that. We have a motion and a second and we'll do a roll call vote first to close the public hearing. Jim O'Neill?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And Ben, aye. So the public hearing is now closed.
I'll make a motion, the application for the all alcohol common vicure license for George Dialis Inc. doing business as GG Pizza Company.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Jim O'Neill?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And Ben, aye. That's 5-0-0. Motion passes. Thank you very much Sarkis for coming in and best of luck.
Thanks very much folks.
Alright, take care. Alright, thank you. Moving on to the next item of business, item of business number two, under appointments, is the vote to approve proposal for shared street grant application that's prepared by Tool Design. Jim Johnson, do you want to give us any background information there?
Sure, just a little bit of background. This is one of those grants that came up over the last few months through the Commonwealth to encourage, you know, usage of outdoor space that's public, to kind of promote that. Ashley's been working on this one with a company based in Seattle, so I appreciate Kristen and I know I saw Brian here to chime in from Seattle. They've been working with us on this proposal. I think, I'd like to have them walk you through. I know that the Fire Chief, Police Chief and DPW have weighed in with some of their concerns, but I'm sure we can get into that after the fact. Most importantly, it's going to be the one, I call it the Elm Street Extension there between the bandstand and the flagpole common. So that's kind of where we're at with this.
Great, great. So Ashley, would you all have, would you like to run through a couple of slides here, you know, for the board? As far as what this entails for those three items?
Yeah, that would be great. So, sorry, Kristen and Brian have both been really wonderful to work with through this. As Jim mentioned there with Tool Design, they're through a, like a grant for technical help through these projects. So I've kind of presented to you conceptually and tonight they're going to walk through the more technical drawings. Kristen, I think the plan is for her to share our screen with everyone.
Yeah, just a moment. Hi, everyone.
Hi Kristen.
Alright, are you able to see my slide there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great.
So the first couple of slides are just kind of, I think, a summary of the planning documents that we've talked about before and I just, one thing.
Do you want to start there?
Yeah, that's, so these are kind of the program goals, which I believe we've touched base on. And then, sorry, could you go to the next slide? Just our planning context. So what I'm emphasizing is that all of the things in this plan are goals and ideas that have been kind of supported through planning documents that the Select Board has adopted. And so one thing that I ask everyone to keep in mind is that with the exception of the proposed crosswalk, all of the elements we're talking about here are temporary. And we have an opportunity to use state funding to really help us pilot some of these ideas that this board's discussed and talked about and about improving pedestrian safety on Main Street. So nothing here is permanent and they're all things that if there are issues that come up that are untenable, we can go in and we can remove all of those things. So just want to put that out there and ask that you kind of keep that in mind as we move forward. And that's all I have to say. So Kristen, if you want to jump into the plans?
Yeah, thank you. So I wanted to introduce also my colleague Brian Tang who's here. So Tool Design actually has a Boston office and I'm, and I'm in Seattle and Brian's in Minneapolis. So we're all over the country, but this project has been run out of our Boston office. So. Yeah, so these were some of the, the highlights that Ashley talked about needing a better design downtown to activate things. Making a gathering space, having outdoor dining spaces, supporting the arts program with programming. And those are all things that, that this goal, this grant program wants. So. So she talked about all these things, like the improving intersections, activation, these from the economic development strategy. So now we'll just walk through the projects and I'm fine with you guys asking questions in the middle or at the end, whichever works for you. So the first one is the East Street Crossing. So just to give you some context, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor, but in the lower left-hand corner is the park and this is East Street. So the parking access drive comes right through the middle of the plan here. So what we're proposing is to prove, to put in a formal crosswalk with a flashing beacon, a rectangular rapid flash beacon and new curb ramps. And the idea behind this is to calm traffic because apparently people come around the corner somewhat fast and just provide a safe connection for people to cross to the park, to the former's market, to make a connection between the town center and the neighborhood. So. These are the actual plans that we'll be submitting to Mast dot. So they look very technical. But you can see the crosswalk here, the curb ramps. And then we're kind of formalizing the edges of the roadway here with some paint. And then we're required for ADA accessibility to put in a, a warning surface to let people know that they're going into the street. And some of the considerations that we went through in the placement of this crosswalk, we looked at a lot of different, about three or four locations on the street and we considered, there's some existing utility poles. We wanted to make sure we had good visibility. There's some existing driveways. We didn't want to interrupt those. And then there's an existing bus stop. So we shifted the bus stop, I think, a little bit. But the rest of it all doesn't conflict with anything else out there. Any questions on that one? No?
Actually, it's Jim O'Neill. Ben, could I ask a question?
Yeah, please, please go ahead. It's probably easier to do it through this. So please, Jim.
Can you talk about what you've done with the bus stop? You say you shifted the bus stop. Can you, can you talk about where it is today and where it's moving to?
Yeah, Brian, do you want to jump in?
Sure. The existing bus stop sign is mounted on the existing utility pole, which is right at the edge of where we're proposing that sidewalk pavement. And the purpose of moving it is just because we're installing a new sign directly in front of that utility pole. And so we would just be moving the bus stop sign to the new sign that we're, to the pole for the crosswalk flasher and the crosswalk sign. So that they'll just be on the same sign pole instead of that bus stop sign being mounted on the utility pole.
So it's basically still in the same spot?
Yes.
And you don't have to answer this question because I'm sure we'll get into this with the police chief and the fire chief. But my other concern that I'm going to want to hear about is the, the traffic coming out of the center and whether there'll be a backup in between the crosswalk on East Street and the center that would cause that intersection to get jammed up. Again, you don't have to speak to that now, but that is something I'm going to want to talk about when the time's right.
Yeah, so Brian, feel free to jump in, but the way this flashing beacon works is that it's, it only goes on when there are pedestrians there. So it's not like a regular signal that would just be on, on a cycle that would be continually ask, continually asking cars to stop. So it's just when pedestrians activate it. And so they can choose to activate it or not. It might be that they come, a pedestrian comes to the corner and there are no cars there and they feel safe walking across and they don't have to activate it. But if you need that extra comfort of having the signal that you can turn that on.
But I guess my question is if, as you're, so I push the button and the signal comes on, does the, is there any, any potential for the traffic to back up into the intersection?
It's, it's really just a few seconds. It just allows people to cross the street so it doesn't go on for more than, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, but you know, whatever it takes to cross the street. So it's, it's the delay would be very minimal.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Ben, can I ask a question right now?
Please, Mark. Go ahead.
Thanks. I believe this intersection was also supposed to have some work done by Pulte as a part of their four building development right up the street. How is this the same or different than what they were planning to do? Maybe Ashley can answer that or I'm not sure. Who knows?
To chime in if I could, Ben. The three intersections that Pulte identified was the one off of 27 in East right near Byron and Mrs. Backoff right there. The other one was right in front of Eastover where their project is. And the third one was right at Stone and School right here at Town Hall. So, sorry, 27 and School right here at Town Hall. So it wasn't this intersection. Because that one's right across from where the Ken Tracy's Barber Shop is and the Pool Supply Place right there.
Okay.
I do have one question, Mr. Barrett, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, David.
So is this consistent with the look and feel of the intersections at School Street and at Westover? I think it would be appropriate to have all of the pedestrian crosswalks and crossways along that street to look the same for driver identification so that, you know, they'll know it's another one coming up, another one coming up. Is it going to look the same and feel the same? And is this going to be a calming hump on either of those intersections? Crosswalks, did I hear that? And that's it?
Okay, thanks David. Yeah. Kristen, if you had a, well, certainly the first portion of that question, David, we'll have to look into. Jim Johnson, I don't know if you know, or Ashley off the top of your head. I think that that's a fair comment that if we're going to be consistently putting pedestrian crossings on this route, that people should see and expect that something or similar, the same or similar at each spot. So that's something we can look into as we go forward.
So just my comments on that, it would be my intent to make sure that we have the same piece of equipment that we have right across from the high school and over near, there's one near Ginjo, right near the old funeral home right there. So it'd be the same piece of equipment.
Yeah, okay.
In that level of design, we would get into if the grant, if, if the board approves this crosswalk. And then the other thing is this portion of our grant application is the most kind of what we think out, maybe outside of the purview of this grant. So the chances that it gets, it gets funded are low. But if the board does approve this and we do get the funding, we'll get down to that level of detail and have it match.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ashley. And then the, the last question, David, I think was, was it speed bumps?
Are either of those crosswalks intended to be humped or like?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay, okay. So I'm, thank you.
Alright, great, great. Okay. Kristen, please, please go ahead.
Okay. So the next project is creating some expanded space for walking and dining on Common Street. So the, what we're proposing is, so today there are two central lanes and a wider middle lane. We're proposing to, to narrow those just a bit and essentially widen out the sidewalk by creating a painted space shown here in this kind of buff color that's marked with a white line. So essentially we're just pushing the parking spaces into the street a bit and narrowing the travel lanes that will slow cars down. There's still plenty of room for trucks and buses to go through there. And then that'll just create space along the edge of the roadway for people to step off the curb so that they can walk in a socially distanced way. We're also proposing at the corner of Stone Street to revise the, the curve, the curb radius by putting again, just a paint treatment with some flex posts. And that will slow cars down so that as they come driving a bit slower. Those are all features that, you know, if, if a fire truck needs to come through in a hurry and there's a car blocking, they can knock those down. But you can see that we've shown the, we have a software that tracks the turning movements of large vehicles. And you can see that's shown with the trucks, the fire trucks that the fire department uses. And we've worked with them to make sure we have the right vehicle and talked with them about their concerns getting around the corner. We're also showing in this dark, this dark blob here, it didn't come out very well in this graphic, but a modular bus stop. And that essentially, again, pushes the, the bus stop out closer to the street. It allows the bus to kind of park or stop in lane and pedestrians, the boarding and the lighting of the bus would happen on that platform. It's a plastic platform and that would get people off the sidewalk. So that allows more, more spaces for people to walk. What else? There would be some planters along the edge of the walking area. And then we're showing in two places, some parklets. The one in front of Jalapeno's Parklet or Street or whatever you want to call it. And it's basically taking, I think, two parking spaces and creating a space for people to sit and eat. We can put tables and chairs, umbrellas, that kind of thing out there. So I guess the main things that I want to emphasize here are that we aren't diminishing the parking supply greatly. We're taking just a couple away, but it'll allow these businesses to accommodate lots of customers in front and lots more walking space. And all of the alleys and such will, will remain.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Yeah. And so I would also just refer people back to the previous presentation that Ashley had given us. I know this, that we've all seen these before, but in reference to the parklets. And honestly, it's similar to what we're doing right now in front of Tessie's and Raven's Nest by bumping out with the, the traffic barrier. And so instead of just bumping out with extra traffic barrier that we had lying around, it would actually be no structured parklets with planters and new furniture and, and new items that are all funded by this grant, not through the cost of the town. So it's kind of taking what we're doing now and making it look nicer, more inviting and certainly more comfortable. Why don't we, since everyone had questions on the last one, Kristen, why don't I just run through here? We'll just run through the board members and see what questions folks have on this, this item here being the second of three parts of the, of the proposal. So Jim O'Neill, do you have any questions or comments on this?
Yeah, probably, probably a couple of both. So I'm in favor of parklets. I like what we're trying to do here with the downtown area. I think we've made some interesting progress as a result of the pandemic and I, and I think we need to institutionalize that. Here's the challenge. We need to make sure that we do this in a way that does not impact public safety. So if you, if you go back to that last page that you were on, I have a couple of questions there. But yeah, the one that has the, let's start with the, the bus platform itself, which if I understood you properly, I think what you said is that actually is going to push the bus, or not push the bus, but keep the bus in the, in the traffic lane as opposed to the bus pulling to the curb. So did I, did I hear that right?
Yeah, I don't think I expressed that accurately. You can see right now, well, today there's that crosshatch parking area and we are pushing that out a little bit, but the bus will be able to pull out of the roadway and the, and a car could pull around them.
So my, my, and again, again, some of my questions will be answered by the chiefs. But you think about the, the fire apparatus coming around that corner and having to deal with that bus now pushed, you know, four or five feet out into the roadway. And so that will be one of my questions. And then just generally, the question of the curb and the curve of the curb and what it means to particularly fire apparatus. So if we can do this in a way that doesn't impede the fire apparatus, I am really very supportive of it. But we've got to be very, very careful here that we don't do anything that's going to, you know, stop the ambulance or the fire apparatus from getting through there the way that they need to get through. That's it. Thanks.
Yeah, for sure. So why don't, why don't we go ahead and use that as a segue here? And we can go ahead and answer the, the second part first, which, which is the curving, right? So Kristen, if I understand it correctly, the, the curving isn't being moved, right? That hat, the yellow area that's shaded and the service mounted bollards or the delineator posts that are breakaway, that's all just paint and at the surface level, right? We're not actually moving the curb?
Exactly.
Okay, okay. Alright, but certainly as far as the bus stop goes, I think we have, we have the chief on here. Chief Bailey?
I believe both of them were on here.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, I am. I'm sorry, guys. We have like 20 something people on here. So I got to scroll through. Chief, please, go ahead. You were, did you hear Jim's question?
Yes, you want the fire chief to go first, correct?
Please.
Yes. So I did hear his question. So my concerns are the, pretty much the same as they were the other day. Yes, they made the fire truck showing it that it goes around the corner. The bus is a problem for us today. Never mind with this plan here and pushing it out. When that bus is parked there, it isn't just, doesn't stop and then pick up people and leave. It is there anywhere from five to 15 minutes at a time. And it's there several times throughout the day and it is very difficult for us to make that corner. By pushing that, that ramp thing out and any further into the street, I don't know how it's going to alleviate the problem. The other thing is, is that on Stone Street where we're coming out and we have those bollard things that are going to be, even though they say they're breakaway, people aren't going to pull, right now, we do 3,500 runs out of this station a year. And our main route is out to the Main Street and right and left with all of those runs. And Stone Street at the intersection of Main and Stone is tight to begin with. So when we're coming out of here, many times we have vehicles coming at us as well as vehicles trying to pull to the right. If we're going to put bollards there and, and even though they're breakaway, people aren't going to pull over and have their car come in contact with those if they know that they're there. So I am concerned about that as well. And then going down through the center of town, I'm just concerned with the 12-foot travel width currently. So we're basically taking eight feet off of each side, so 16 feet to make the two 12-foot travel lanes. We have many cars that are queued up on both sides of the street, not only during rush hour, but during the daytime hours. I was out there at 2 o'clock today and we had cars queued up on both sides. And my concern is, is that if they're queued up waiting for the lights to turn and we're trying to come down through with fire apparatus, they don't have anywhere to go like they do now. We, we would go in the middle of the road currently. They'd pull away to the right or the left and we'd have access. I'm concerned that we may lose that. So that's my concern with, with this particular drawing.
Yeah, yeah, thanks Chief. And I, and I appreciate it. I know that, that Chief Bailey and Chief Carmichael and Lieutenant White, and there were a bunch of people that were on the other day running through this as well and have been helpful in sharing their, their concerns and their viewpoints on all of this throughout the process. Okay, Chief Carmichael, since, since we're running through here, did you have any additional comments to what Chief Bailey just said?
No, I, you know, I, Chief was saying there, right, what, just one, two points I think I would like to make. One would be
Um, no, I, you know, I, I, Chief was saying there, right? What, just one, two points I think I would like to make. One would be there, uh, oh, it's tight. I mean, twelve, that twelve feet here in the middle is, is very tight squeeze for Main Street in that location. One issue we have is right now, if you've seen some, some of them out there, the, delivery trucks park on that island. So any of the, we have tractor trailer units, we have UPS drivers, we have FedEx, we have all of those types of delivery services that that's, that middle island is actually where they park to um make a lot of their deliveries. So there'd have to be something done uh with that situation there. And then the other issue is parallel parking, which as we know, Walpole Center right now is, it's all parallel parking and as we, you know, as you close in that kind of gap between either side of the roadway, um, what motorists tend to do now is that when someone's parallel parking, uh, you know, they have a tendency to, to pass them on the left and go around them. Um, and you, you know, we routinely stop cars out there for mock lanes violations uh when that happens. Um, but you know, that's something to consider as well, that you're going to have uh a tighter squeeze there still with the parallel parking and people trying to um pass those vehicles and then sometimes um, you know, violating those mock lanes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief. Um. Let's, let's keep, uh, Jim O'Neil, did that, did that satisfy your questions?
Uh, yeah, I mean, obviously, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna take my, my cues from the chief, both chiefs. It, as, as you were talking, one of the things that I wondered about is is there a way for us to be not, maybe not quite as expansive as what we're proposing here? Again, I like this kind of idea, so I, I, I want to try to find a solution here. But you know what? It seems to me that one of the problems we've got is we're, we're pushing things into the roadway. So the bus, the parking spaces and so forth. Would we be better off thinking about sacrificing parking spaces? But that's it. So you know, you, then you would only expand the, the parklets as far as the parking space. In which case, that would make the situation not worse than it is today, unless there's some other safety thing that I'm not thinking about. So as I just listened to the chief and I, and, and thinking about how this would actually work in the twelve feet bend, I, I, I wonder if we're just trying to accomplish too much there in the street and if we could just decide, look, we're going to give up five parking spaces and that gives you the parklet, but, and you get, you lose the spaces. But, but it, but we accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. And I, I don't know if this is a good idea or a bad idea, but I throw it out for the board.
Yeah. No, thank you, Jim. I appreciate that. Um, Ashley, maybe this would be a good time to just briefly talk about the, the, the process. I don't want to get too hard field here, but uh, the process here with the grant and if we're awarded the grant and how we would then put that into effect. I mean, this isn't a, a vote today to say that we like this idea doesn't mean that what we're looking at on the screen happens if we get the grant, right? We need to go through another process at that point to decide exactly what we're going to do. Or maybe you could walk us through that um and answer the Jim's question.
Um. Kristen might be a better person to talk about like process and next steps. I can say that um we're really tight on deadlines. Summer is coming to a close. The deadline application is coming to a close. Um, so we're, we're kind of in a position where we need to decide if we want to move forward with this application. Uh, but Kristen, can you share maybe about the next steps that you've seen with other communities?
Yeah, so um they really are looking for communities to implement these quickly. Um, and, and um as, as Ashley said, they're not in, not always intended to be permanent, um although you get kind of special credit for um if you do um implement things that could be permanent. So um I think there is not a lot of um time for revisions. I mean, revisions can happen, but the idea is that you would just, you know, put, put an experiment down. These have to go through review process. Um. In other communities, um, we've had to have Mast dot um district, district uh staff review and do traffic management plans and that kind of thing. So it's, they're not without um scrutiny, but uh for the most part, and we haven't gotten a lot of comments and hadn't had to do a lot of revisions on these.
Okay. And so to be a little more pointed in my question, uh, we're going to be voting on this tonight because the application has to go in, so it can't be revised before it goes in. Um, the point being that if we vote and we say, yes, this is a good idea, let's go forward and we receive it, we're unable to alter what we see in front of us tonight, or can we work further with the fire chief to shrink some areas and enlarge others to make it um more amenable to the, to the um uh emergency vehicles and whatnot?
I think that, that it would be okay to revise, but I, I should just double check on that.
Sure.
Once you've been awarded.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Right.
I can chime in on uh another one of these grants that I've been helping with. And we've, we've certainly uh, we've certainly made I, I'd say some, some, some fairly substantial revisions even after the grant was awarded. And so um, at least what I have in mind as, as, as I, ideas in my head for how we might address some of these concerns as far as making sure the emergency vehicles can get through. Um, I think that the things that I have in my mind as far as revisions would, would certainly be within the scope of what, what's doable in the amount of time that we'll have. Um, one idea that we discussed briefly um at the meeting last week um was are there steps we can take to ensure that there's space on the side of the roadway uh within the parking lane? Um, where uh basically ensuring that there's parking spaces available that people are able to pull over um to get out of the travel lane to allow emergency vehicles to get through. Um, so that that way, you know, there's going to be some redundant space um that we need um, you know, to ensure that the emergency vehicles can get through. Currently, that redundant space is in the center of the roadway. Um. And can that kind of redundant space be perhaps um some short-term parking spaces? Um, or, or even just some crosshatched area that um used to be parking spaces that are temporarily kind of um, you know, no parking areas um where people, then the boom will be available for people to pull over. So things within that kind of realm of, of, uh, not blowing up the entire design, but just uh you know, changing what signs or how it's marked uh. That's certainly within the realm of possibility.
So it, it sounds like uh Ben, you could condition your approval tonight for, based on final design review approval. Is, is what I'm.
Right, and yeah, for sure, Ashley, and I, I appreciate that. I, I appreciate those specifics. Um, and I think that just knowing our board, that's what we would probably do anyways. It, it, and reminding people that this is just an application for an idea that um we're not only going to wake up tomorrow and, and there's going to be uh, it's going to be completely different. So uh anyways, uh, okay, very good. Thank you. Let's um, let's go on then, I guess. Uh, Nancy McKenzie, any questions or, or comments on this, the second of three items? Nancy?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Got you now, yep.
Um, as far as blocking off uh twenty-seven, well, not twenty-seven, what is it called there? Going it down to Elm?
Oh, yeah, we haven't quite got to that, gotten to that one yet. We're just looking at this Main Street one, if you have any. We're just taking them one by one so that we can keep it orderly.
So if that's the case, I like the idea of staying within the parking spaces. Uh, I just feel it's just such, I mean, I, I, I love the idea of slowing it down. But the problem with that is, you know, definitely if we start having delivery trucks down there, um, that's just going to cause so much congestion with people trying to deliver and that's actually going to then kind of impede the businesses and then make it something that people want to be driving around and avoiding. Um. You know, I, I love all the planters. I love all, you know, um, what they've done so far. You know, Conrad's got very inventive by kind of using over to the side and out in the um existing sidewalk. But as far as you know, making it more difficult for the bus or for the fire trucks, um, like that gets me concerned. Like i- if we were just in a pedestrian downtown, I, I love the entire thing. But when we start to hear that, you know, we have this brand new huge ladder truck, that that's its way out and what's going to happen there, that kind of, it makes me worried. Uh. You know, that's what I'm hearing.
Great. Thank you, Nancy. Um, we will go to Mark. Any questions or comments on this item?
I, I, I would say that I, I like the general concept. I like the parklets. Um, I, I am concerned about um on the, you know, the last two slides um about how much of the driving lanes we're taking up. I'm also a big believer, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but that the more people you can get slotted into a right lane, a go straight lane and a left turn lane, the better. Um, because if you look at queuing theory, uh, people complain all the time to us, even during COVID, about the downtown creating traffic gridlock going both directions uh out of downtown. Um, and if we're letting fewer people into the zone, um, enforcing them to single stream before they then take a left or go straight or go right, um, that's really going to slow things down even more. You know, so I, I, I think we really need to, to think about that. Um. I, I do want to ask a question about the grant. So I'm a little uncomfortable with this being really the first time we've seen any of the detail and needing to vote right away. Normally, we would do this in a workshop where we'd have a couple hours to bang it around with the, the chiefs and, you know, everybody who's involved. Um. So if, so the question really is if we do vote on this tonight to move forward with this, um. What are we really committing to? Uh, if it's a concept and we're trying to get a grant and we want to do some nice designs, I'm probably comfortable with that. But if we're committing to actually do the things that are on this drawing and on the other drawings, I'm pretty leery. Um, especially when we talk about the um Elm Street Common Street connector. So I, I, I just want to let you know, I'm feeling fairly uncomfortable with approving a specific design. But if you tell us that the designs really don't matter and we'll have a chance to rework it later, you know, that would give me a, a bigger comfort factor.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Uh, we will go to David.
Um, I hope I'm pronouncing it Ms. Lozey. Um. It is, it mentioned something about uh traffic calming or uh reducing speeds. Um. Could you explain how that occurs um in this design? And what the expectation is as to what uh what the speeds are now and what those speeds will be after the calming takes place?
Yeah, um, so this is your, you know, this is your town center and you want people to feel safe walking and, and crossing the street um and accessing the business. And um, the theory behind, behind traffic calming is that the wider the road, um, the less um friction there is at the sides and then drivers just feel like they can go quickly. So um if there's more things going on on the side like street trees and parallel parking, um, and also the, the lanes are, are narrower, it induces people to slow down because they, they know they have to pay attention to what's going on in the environment. So that's the idea is that um we would just narrow the lanes to slow people down. Um, and an appropriate speed in a business district is honestly like twenty-five or thirty miles an hour. They want to, you want people to be able to respond to a kid getting out of a car or people wanting to cross or, you know, a fire truck, you know? Um, and then um a big wide turn um also allows people to move pretty quickly um to, to take a, a, a turn quickly. So basically, we were just trying to narrow the corner and that make, that forces people to go more slowly. So they don't just whip around the corner and then they're right there where people are, are gathering.
Okay. And as a follow-up of that, so the current travel lane uh is how many feet? And I, I see that it would be reduced to twelve feet. What is the current width?
Ryan, are you able to answer that one?
I'm sure. I have Google Maps pulled up and I'll just double check right now. Um. I think it's, it's actually either eleven or twelve currently. Um, but what's, what's currently there is there's the painted median. Um, so the overall width of the roadway um is wider and so that um then visually looks wider. Yes, the, the current um travel lane with uh adjacent to the parked cars is twelve feet. Um, and then it just has that striped median next to it that makes it feel much wider. And then once you get over to the intersection um where the um turn lanes are, as I've uh labeled on the drawing, the, those lanes are actually eleven feet. Um, but you don't have a factor of the parked cars next to it, so.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Thanks, David.
All right. Sorry, I had a question. I'm sorry.
Oh, please. No, go ahead, please.
Uh, what was the uh, what was the response of the downtown business owners to the loss of parking spaces? And to generally this design? And uh did the Economic Development Group uh Committee uh have any input on, uh, have a view of this and what was can summarize what they had to say?
Ben, would you like me to answer that?
Please, Ashley. Yeah, go ahead, Ashley. Thank you.
So one of the priorities in this was to, to lose as few parking spaces as possible. Um, so what you're seeing today is a loss of minimal parking spaces. What I've heard being discussed would potentially result in the loss of many more parking spaces. So that's certainly a conversation that we should have with the business owners. Uh, Destination Downtown, who has, you know, various community members, including business owners, provided a letter of support for this application. Um, I think that people kind of want to pilot things and see what happens and um learn from those mistakes and learn from the wins. Uh, the EDC has not had a meeting and discussed this application.
Thanks, Ashley.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right. So before, before we go to the third one here, I'll just make a, a couple of comments. One is um if nothing else, this overview, these two slides of our Main Street shows uh how um e- essentially inoperable the Main Street downtown is. Given that there's currently three lanes of space there, which obviously our emergency vehicles are forced to utilize because traffic can't flow through. So I think it was, was Mark and, and certainly Chief Bailey made the point that um it's essentially three lanes wide, the traffic queues up in both directions and emergency vehicles are forced to use that center lane. And so that's a structural issue with this stretch of Main Street downtown. That's never been addressed or remedied. And certainly having delivery trucks parked directly in the middle of the street, in the middle of downtown is another structural issue um that's never been remedied, along with the bus stop that's at the corner of Stone Street that currently is an issue um for the fire department and has been for quite some time. And admittedly, moving a, moving a bus stop even a foot uh can take quite a, quite a, it's quite a bit of an undertaking, I should say, and can take many months. But these, these are structural issues and the last one being parking on the street. And we had a parking study done just a year ago that shows that the lots off of Main Street behind these businesses are never full. In fact, they're very rarely even more than seventy-five percent full. So the belief that we somehow need these spaces in the, in the Main Street, which is causing all of this congestion issues, not just with traffic, with emergency, emergency vehicles, deliveries and the bus, it, it requires us to take a whole new view of what we're trying to do here with the downtown and the downtown in this stretch of Main Street. So we should, regardless of what happens today, take those four or five items away from this and, and they're certainly action items that we need to um look at and act on as soon as possible because of their impact to the downtown. So with that being said, um, Kristen, if you could please just go on to the third uh, third part of the proposal here, we'll cover that.
I'd be happy to. All right. So this is the final one. As Ben said, um, we are proposing to close um Elm Street right in the middle of the common. Um, and um it would all be done with temporary barriers. Um, we're showing some um water barriers and then planters. Um, and this could be done um with paint also to kind of create um kind of a more interesting space. And then you could put out tables and chairs, you know, lawn games, things that people can do while distancing. tables and chairs, you know, lawn games, things that people can do while distancing and, um, create this, um, really special space, which is essentially right in the middle of town. Um, it seems like a a great idea for families, kids to be able to ride their bikes, um, downtown, that kind of thing. So. Um, and again, this is a pilot, um, so it's just a a test. And it would, it, um, include detour signs to redirect traffic around. And we have discussed, um, the turning movements of trucks and the traffic flows and and that kind of thing with police and fire as well.
Great. And, uh, let's go ahead then and just open it up. Jim O'Neill, do you have any comments or questions on this one?
Yeah, so, um, I I think I think the idea is a good one on a very temporary basis. You know, we we close it from time to time, like on the on the night before the fourth and so forth. Um, given, given planters and tables and barriers and so forth, how, when, when would we be thinking the street would be closed?
So Ben, do you want me to answer this one?
Please, go right ahead.
So I think with this, what I think what you're getting at is this isn't something that we could set up on a Friday and break down on a Sunday. Uh, nor nor would, that was their original intention when they closed Main Street and they got it all out there on Friday night and no one wanted to come back on Sunday and bring it all back in. Um, so they they just decided to do it full-time on their main street. And, um, from what I've heard, people have really loved it and, um, they've worked through some issues that have come up, but um, they've gotten really great feedback. And so this is kind of taking, you know, taking that as an example, except it's not Main Street, it's this side street. And, um, you know, I think that having a contact for community members and people experiencing this at the town to kind of get feedback would be really great. But yeah, this would be a more kind of long-term pilot program. So you could do, you know, two weeks or three weeks and then have a meeting to talk about how it's going and potentially extend it. Um, the other thing I I want to note about this is, um, all of the furniture and materials that we'd be able to get as a result of this grant, um, we could reappropriate somewhere else in town, uh, if we shut down the program. So it's kind of an opportunity to uh, get some public street furniture as well. So that's a tangent, but, um, yeah, it would be a longer term closure.
Yeah, so that that would really concern me, uh, because I I I just have a hard time believing that. And and maybe I'm totally wrong here, but I don't think so. I have a feeling if we shut down that part of the road, that that's going to create, you know, just gridlock in in downtown Walpole. Nothing's going to move. Um, it is a pretty main road, you know, if you think about the flow from Common onto Elm Street and the number of, uh, vehicles that go through there every hour, it's a lot. And having stood on that corner, holding various signs many times, I I know how much traffic goes through there. So I I really can't see it as something that would be more than a very temporary situation. And and then the downside with that, as you've already pointed out, Ashley, is, you know, temporary is is a funny thing. Those barriers would take a lot to move. You get a lot of stuff here. I I just, I love the idea. Don't get me wrong. I would think if we could make it work, it'd be phenomenal. But I I just, in my heart of hearts, I look at this and I go, it's a non-starter. There's just no way this is going to work. And and I really do believe it will cause gridlock. And, you know, I I guess, again, I defer to the the police and fire chief on this to hear their their thoughts, but I know there's a lot of big, like tractor trailer trucks that go through there. You know, as you think about it as a sort of thoroughfare on to, you know, what would ultimately be twenty-seven coming down Common Street. Um, I just, I just have a really hard time figuring out how we would make this work, even though it's, I, you know, it it's an innovative and creative and good idea, but it's not workable, I'm afraid.
I I think it becomes a question of priorities. Um, I also, there are like two hundred units of apartments coming online pretty soon. So also anticipating more pedestrians coming to the area and hopefully not driving to Main Street. But, yeah.
Thanks.
Great. Um, Nancy. All right. Why don't we go quick? We'll just go to Mark. Mark, why don't you go? And then we'll get Nancy back on here.
All right. I, um, I I have some of the same feelings that Jim does. I think closing off the Elm Street to Common Street Connector, uh, is a big problem. Um, you know, I I don't want to, you know, make it nicer for a few pedestrians to come down and enjoy this little strip every day at the cost of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people, uh, who are Walpole residents getting stuck in massive traffic jams. Um, you know, because people are coming down Common, um, trying to go down to what's twenty-seven. I'm not sure we want to force tractor trailers, uh, down to the Conrad's intersection to make that turn. Um, we also hear from people right now about how hard it is to get out of the train station or get to the train station at rush hour. Um, and I think this will make that whole area even more confusing. Uh, you know, this is one of the ones that if, you know, if we could do some sort of a workshop thing, I'd really like to see a traffic study done on, you know, how many people really flow through these intersections and what will this really do to it? I'm I'm pretty much against this at this stage, uh, just because having stood holding signs in June, uh, many days in the morning and afternoon. Um, you know, even during COVID, I was amazed at how many people queued up at the traffic lights and didn't make it through the light at each cycle. So that that worries me a lot.
All right. And, uh, Nancy, let's go back to you. Now, let's go to, uh, David, please. David, comments or questions on this third item?
Sure, um. So someone traveling towards Medfield, coming from Common Street, and they want to continue on Elm Street, they're going to take, their only option will be to take a right and then pr- practically make a U-turn back onto, uh, East Street, uh, West Street. Is that is that where the the vehicles are going to end up? Or is there an, am I missing something?
No, there, I mean, there's three options, right? They can, they can, well, it it depends on the, uh, it depends on how it's enacted, right? If that Elm extension that goes all the way out to twenty-seven, um, is also closed to redirect traffic, to detour traffic, then no, they couldn't take that left. They'd either take a left down by Bank of America or they'd go all the way down to twenty-seven and take twenty-seven around. But, um, yeah, there's a couple of ways that that could work out, depending on how we want to set it up, how the actual implementation of it.
So you're saying someone from Common Street is going to go where? I'm sorry, my audio was a little off there, but, um.
So if you take a right, yeah, you take a right on the Main Street, the easiest way it would be to go down to the light of twenty-seven and take a left and just get on twenty-seven. Um, but there's three, three different ways that you could do that.
Okay. So Greenwood's going to continue to be one-way down that direction? Uh, yeah, okay. Uh, you know, there's so many things wrong with this that I I don't even know where to begin. Um, I have a question. Um, Ms. Clark was talking about Main Street in, um, Norwood being closed. Where 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 are we talking about?
Ashley?
Um, did Norwood close their their Main Street area and to all cars? And it's just pedestrians and they put up lights and tables and chairs and whatnot.
Is that adjacent to the common?
It's right near Lewis's, David, right near, uh, the the theater there.
Okay, Central Street, not not a, not an extremely active, uh, pass-through in that, uh, particular, uh, part of Norwood. Um, it's, it's, anyway, okay, um. But the Stone Street light, how is that activated? Uh, I mean, the West Street light, um, and the Stone Street, Main Street, uh, intersection, how are the cross-intersection lights activated?
I'm not sure.
Do you guys, um, I think they're, they're controlled by that box at the top near, um, Ravens Nest, but Carl, I know we're having some problems with that. That's where it's controlled, right?
Yeah, yeah. Each each light has its own controller and I believe they're under camp, they're they're on cameras now for activation. There's no more loops, uh, magnetic detectors in the roads.
So they're on demand? Essentially, is that what you call that?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, is it true that Stone Street and West Street are not green at the same time? They're green at separate, uh, center, separate intervals?
I believe so, but I don't want to comment too far because I don't know how integrated those signals are.
Okay, well, all right. Uh, I'll, I'll save my comments for later.
I wanted to jump into, just to, um, clarify, uh, what Ben was saying earlier as far as the three options for getting, um, in the kind of northwest, the westbound direction to get over to twenty-seven from Common Street. Um, as far as I know, um, uh, let me just double check this. Yes, um, Glenwood is one-way, um, toward East Street, um, toward, you know, going toward twenty-seven. Um, and so that that was the third, the third option. So so option one is, yes, doing that that hairpin turn, which, you know, would be a problem for large vehicles, but is is certainly possible for smaller vehicles. Um, and then option two, it would be, um, turning left to go down, um, Glenwood, uh, which obviously we don't want a ton of traffic taking that option. And then, um, yeah, option three, which may be most appealing toward maybe some of the large vehicles or, um, uh, could be to go all the way out of the way to, um, the East Street intersection. But, um, tho- those are, those are the three, um, options that I think Ben was referring to.
I have a question. Is Tool Design a, uh, traffic engineering firm?
Uh, we have traffic engineers on staff. I am not a traffic engineer, um, and neither is Kristin, but we do have, um, colleagues who are, um.
Have traffic engineers looked at this project?
Um, I don't think we were scoped to do a full traffic study, um, so I'll have to find out.
Traffic study. I'm asking if traffic engineers looked at this at all.
Uh, we, uh, we have not, um, had, um, any of our traffic engineers look at this, um, if you want. Yeah, we probably could, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It has been reviewed by three different engineers.
Traffic engineers?
Uh, not, not. Yeah, yeah, not.
Traffic engineers?
No, no, none of the, none of the, none of the people who have, who have, who have reviewed this so far are licensed, uh, professional traffic operations engineers, but we do have, uh, quite a few on staff.
Ms. Losi is saying that there, uh, three engineers looked at this, so I I I wanted to know. Yeah, okay. I I have no.
Anything else, Dave? Any other question?
No, I have plenty, but I I'll save it.
Well, now is the time, David.
Okay, um, this is absurd. This is a complete waste of time. I don't know how we got this far. Um, there's no way you can shut down that road. Um, first of all, uh, going back to the, you know, traffic calming and and slowing people down. The concern downtown is not slowing down traffic. The concern downtown is that traffic is too slow. You can't get through downtown. The Stone Street intersection and the West Street intersection are on demand. They are on two separate cycles. They they're never green at the same time. So anytime someone comes into either of those intersections, it stops all the traffic on Main Street. You are essentially now going to make the West Street on demand even more necessary. Um.
It broke up a little bit there, David. Still with us?
You know, and then, so coming up Elm Street, yet people would have to take either a right or a left. Some people will take a left and go down Stone Street, which will increase traffic on Stone Street. Others would people will go right and go on Front Street to get onto Common Street. This is, this is a mess. This is, there's, the, I don't know how this got this far. We should be talking about, uh, items that reduce traffic, get people through downtown more quickly. Everything in this project has been talking about ways to slow traffic down in in downtown. Uh, I I just don't even know why, why we've spent, uh, how how long have we spent on this? Over a half hour on the board level and nobody, we have no proposals, no concern, no discussion by this board in fi- years under the leaderships of of Mr. Gallivan and Mr. O'Neill and now Mr. Barrett, uh, on could getting traffic to flow better through downtown. And what we are talking about is actually slowing down traffic in downtown and doing something that will actually create a disaster. So I, you know, is it time to vote? Because I'm ready to vote.
David, are you done?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, David. Oh, Nancy, are you ready?
Yeah, can you hear me now? Sorry, I had.
No, go ahead.
A technical advisor to help me. I don't know what button I pushed, but I did something weird. The screen doesn't, it's big and I couldn't see any of you. But anyway.
I wanted to give you as much time as possible. So it looks like we got it fixed. Please go ahead, Nancy.
All right, thanks. Um, so David, I know you haven't joined us, but we have had a few meetings that we have touched on this. We did get a presentation on it. And I'm sorry, I did just hear Jim O'Neill and Mark Gallivan discuss concerns and actually back up our fair chief and our police chief who had concerns. And as you know, we go through the administrative process that they have their design review committees, um, meetings, they talk about this sort of stuff. And we have expressed some of what you're saying. So I I I don't know. I'm sorry. I'm just feeling like you're getting a little upset. And so to show up tonight and to be this upset, I just, I find that weird. Anyway, to go back to the design, I love the idea of doing all of the things that you're doing in that street area. But I think that we need to move it to the green grass and move it to the commons and things like that. I understand that you wanted to like connect them and make them friendly and pedestrian-friendly, but I think both of those commons are big enough that we can move that stuff out there. Um, I think what could happen here is what happens to poor South Walpole when there's a Patriots game. People will start wazing and they will start going through neighborhoods that to find ways around in less traffic. Um, you know, David brought up traffic, as did, uh, Mark and Jim, it being a concern. Um, it not as upset, but, um, I think it is a concern and I think that the residents and the neighbors around, and I did hear from some of them, thought that it would be a little bit more of a recipe of disaster for what would happen around it. Um, to compare us to Norwood, like you, I, to me, you can't even. You go over and what they did was made a really great use of a very dead space that wasn't a cut-through as far as in front of the movie theater. And it looks beautiful. They did like such a nice job. But we could almost do that on the commons and string some nice lights and set up some different, like a game area, set up like a dining area and do that sort of stuff and still get this kind of furniture, but not take away a main road that if we're not able to do it just for, you know, like the one big outdoor dining night, truck night that the EDC has done in the past where they block it all off of one big, you know, finale for the end of that outdoor dining thing. But as far as commuters go, as far, you've gotten all the way back from Providence, you've gotten all the way back from Boston. You then don't want to have to reroute and not try to get home. Um, as far as traffic calming, I think there's a mix here that we're sort of missing. Um, we want it to be calm, pedestrian-friendly. We want it to be inviting, but yet we do want to be, um, our due diligence to realizing that people want to get through and get home. Um, our due diligence to realizing that people want to get through and get home. Um, so I think that we have a really great idea here, but as far as. Eliminating roads that are already heavily traveled, I think that we've got plenty of green, beautiful space. That we could rework this and that's my thought.
Great, thanks Nancy. All right, so um to to wrap this up and I give my two senses. You know, I, we could spend two hours on this and I think that it would be time well spent because uh as I said on the Main Street portion. And this Elm Street portion is even more so shows the structural issues we have with traffic downtown. And the fact that nothing's changed as far as traffic flow in, you know, fifty, sixty years. And that there may not have been that many tractor trailers and tri axles pulling through our downtown at that time. Now there is a ton and if you're trying to sit out in front of Tessie's and enjoy your dinner. And there's fifteen tractor trailers pulling through just so they can make the cutoff down through Elm Street to twenty seven. That makes the downtown experience less enjoyable. It means people will go downtown to those businesses less often. Um, so there's really structural issues that need to be addressed and we need to shift our priorities and I think that. Ashley alluded to this a little bit uh at the beginning of all of this, which is to say, um, for me personally, I can say that my priorities are not. Uh, to make it easier for tractor trailers to go through our downtown. They should be finding the easiest routes, the main routes that are intended for them. And if that means going on twenty seven the entire way rather than taking Common Street and and the cutoff through. Then that's the way the town should have it set up because these traffic lights and these intersections and our downtown walkways should be working for the residents. And and not for any trucking companies or any, anybody else that has to pull through. So um, I would point out also that. Um, a traffic study uh is being considered. I don't know if it's going to be on this year or not. Uh, uh, um downtown wide traffic study to answer a lot of these questions. I know that that's been um up in the air for quite some time. That is going to happen. So I just want everyone to keep this in in the forefront of their mind and think about um how really messed up the downtown area is. From a traffic perspective and how completely unwalkable it is and how completely unwelcome it is. To businesses uh who want to have open air areas out on the sidewalks. So uh with that being said. I think we've covered all three of these. Kristen, did you have any other um brief parts this presentation to cover at this point?
Well, I just wanted to chime in, uh, Ben, that you painted a pretty bleak picture there and but I. From everything I've seen uh from working on this project, uh, Wallpole seems like a, a great place. I, uh, and um, and and yeah, I'm, 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 I'm sorry that I'm, that I'm not able to uh to visit in person during these times.
No problem. Well, I appreciate you, Kristen and and Brian both spending all this time with us and and Ashley and all the work that you have all put into this. Um, I think it's fantastic and if, if anything, it's thought provoking upon about the possibilities that are down there. And I agree with you, Brian. I think there's a ton of possibilities, so I certainly don't want to sound negative about it, but um perhaps more frustrated that we don't take advantage of those. In a more aggressive manner. So certainly something we'll need to be looking at um moving forward. So we've completed uh, you know, the discussion portion of this. Um, if anyone uh would want to make a motion, uh, we would entertain that at this point.
Can I just add one last thing?
Absolutely, please.
Yeah, so um one, one thing that we talked about um in terms of comment, to go back to Common Street was that um. Again, this was, is just a pilot, but um. Um, typically, I've, I found out that you, um, when your streets are plowed, that you put the snow on the sidewalks. Or at the edge of the sidewalk thereby diminishing the space for people to walk even further. So having that um expanded space for pedestrians would allow you to store snow there. So that, that's an added benefit I forgot to mention. So that would, it would keep the sidewalk white. Thank you. That's it.
Great, great. Thank you, Kristen. Uh, any other comments or I would entertain a motion if there was one? Being that there isn't one, we will move on in our. Agenda, so thank you again to uh Ashley and Kristen and Brian for being with us for putting all this together. Um, I think it's a fantastic opportunity and frankly, an opportunity missed um yet again for our downtown area. Uh, to see improvements in in this way. So we'll move on then to uh the next item under appointments, which is.
Ben, could I jump in just for a second? So I, I disagree with you a little.
Sure, Mark.
I think that this was just an opportunity to grant to try to experiment with a couple of things. I, I think we all agree that downtown needs some work. I think that we should schedule a workshop at some point in the future and take a look at it. Not under the pressure of trying to apply for a grant and, you know, try a couple of quick things. Um, you know, the downtown serves Wallpole very well. I, I think it needs some work. And I'd welcome an opportunity to do a workshop with, you know, all representative groups. And try to figure out what we can do to make that work. As an example, as I looked at all the maps. Um, you know, Front Street is sort of a little used side road. You know, next to the part we were talking about closing, wanted to expand the green space, that would be an opportunity. So just, I, I would just say that. I um, we worked on a workshop at some point, taking a look at downtown. I don't think passing on this grant opportunity. Changes anything long term.
And to, to add to that, um.
Yes, Nancy.
Rick, you may remember before you, um, Bob had done, we did a community outreach up at um the old Raphael's. And actually got all the downtown businesses to give us what. We and they had wanted and their vision was in that workshop, but then unfortunately, we had kind of run out of money. And that's when we ended up really scaling it back and doing what we ended up doing downtown.
Great. All right, great. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the vote to request of uh Matt and Nicole Murphy for street opening permit. At twenty William Street, uh, which is currently under moratorium. Uh, Jim Johnson, did you want to speak to that or?
Yeah, sorry. Um, I know that Rick and Carl are on this call too. Um, these couple of street opening permits, um. I'm not sure if Matt and Nicole are on this call, but um.
They are.
And I believe that uh they have a heating system that's uh, that's been worn out. They've been living the summer, obviously, without the heating system. Uh, but they're looking to get it in before the winter, transition over to gas. Um, that's one of the reasons we brought it forward, um. You know, there is a moratorium on that street, but uh I'll let um them speak to this and the board can make the call.
So, hi guys.
Hi.
Um, I'm Nicole.
I'm Matt.
Um, so we moved to Wallpole last September and shortly after moving in, Columbia had come out. Um, I believe it was September twenty fifth, actually, and um Shane Bagley was the one who came out. He kind of assessed the situation and had said since the gas main was so close, they were able to pull the gas in for free. Um, and you know, we kind of tried to have it done before our heating system became incapacitated. But now we're kind of in a rut here. Um, when Columbia reached out to the town, they had said the street was under moratorium, so we're kind of hoping. That the moratorium can be broken to kind of help us through this hardship because we really want gas.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate you guys coming on tonight with us. Um, why don't we go ahead and we'll just go individually through the board members here with any questions or comments. Um, and then we can have our discussion. So uh Jim O'Neil.
So uh Ben, any, any uh, any concerns from any of our department heads? On uh, on uh the, the street opening here, I, I think I'd just like to, to hear from the, the department heads.
Just um to get it started, I'm sorry, Ben. Um, I know Carl. I was just looking at my notes, all, all, all three of these roads that you're set to consider, William, Elmore and Stone. Excuse me, were all paved in two thousand eighteen, so uh this is what our, our second full summer in doing so. Um, if you're wondering when they, when would they pave? So Carl, any comments?
I, I, I could jump in, Jim. This is, this is, this is Rick. Um. Typically, the Department of Public Works is not in favor of, of granting waivers to the moratoriums. Uh, the particular thing about William Street is, is Kyle. I and Drew Hand from the Highway Department reviewed this request and, and we think. That the request is reasonable. The only thing that we ask is that if the board does grant the moratorium, that the trench be. Patched um in, I believe you people have correspondence relative to uh this matter. We just looking to have the trench patched to the specifications that um we typically use. Now, I believe that the patching of the trench would fall on Columbia as opposed to the homeowners. So. It's, it's kind of a two-part thing. The Columbia needs to commit to paving that trench in, in that manner. And, and the only other thing with William Street is, we look at the, the traffic impacts, William Street is a, is a very lightly traveled street. Um, it's, it's typically only used by the, the folks that live down there. So it's, there is not a, there's no through traffic. Uh, so along those lines, um, we would have no objection to the board granting this waiver if they so desire.
And Rick, Ben, if I might, so the, the joint uh activity with Columbia. What do we need to do to make that happen? And, and will, will Columbia do what you said they need to do? And if not, where does that leave us?
I believe there's a representative of Columbia on the call, if he could speak to that.
You guys can hear me. I'm Brian Gillis from Columbia Gas. Thanks for having me tonight. Um, as far as the restoration for this service and the other services on the list tonight, roadways under moratorium. We would be responsible for the restoration on those trenches. Uh, we do uh all our paving the same day. So it installs the gas service and be paving by the end of the day. Everything would be safe, installing a binder and top coat. Uh, within the trench. Typically, uh, we, we do abide by the permit conditions that you guys hold us to. And that's pretty much it. So if, if it's specified that we get to come back and infrared the trench in six months or a year, we will do so. We also, uh, we are mandated to do trench inspections on all our trenches. So we do come out and perform our own trench inspections, uh, anywhere from thirty to sixty days. Uh, and then also at one year. So we come back and inspect the trenches for failure. So any settlement, uh, any cracking around the edging, stuff like that.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
So we would simply condition um the, the manner in which we'd want the trench patched, Jim. And that would be included in, in the street opening permit that's issued by the engineering department.
Okay, great. Thank you, Rick. Appreciate that.
Ben? So this is a Pandora's box. We are usually extremely protective of these roads. Um, when they're under moratorium, you know, it's a, a lot of money, a lot of roadway. We put a. You know, a lot of investment in this, um, and we really. We, we don't grant these often and um, I do understand it's a low traffic road. And this is a full paving or is it a chip seal?
Full pave.
And so there's gas on the, on the street and there's no other way to bring that gas. And no other line that doesn't involve another way into the property?
Nope, the uh gas is located alongside, so across roadway, so. We have to tie another gas main, we're to cross the roadway and into the property.
I mean, the financial commitment that the town puts into this road, into your road, into every road is huge. And every time we cut it open, it weakens the road. Are you? Are you willing to put a guarantee through the end of this moratorium that you're going to continue to? Be responsible for it? If we get frost heaving, things like that. I mean, that's the stuff that then causes potholes to your neighbors, potholes to you. That is what causes phone calls into the town. I mean, there's, there's a reason that we have these moratoriums. When we have as much, you know, as much roadways as we have and as much money, financial responsibility and financial commitment that we put into them.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we got the uh pretty rigorous uh trench audit program and. Any failures, we do come back and we have to mitigate.
So for the length of the moratorium that we would have on the build or for, you seem to have mentioned a year?
Yep, so that's what our uh inspection process goes up to, coincides with the DP regulations. Uh. You know, being a new roadway, I wouldn't be opposed to if, if, if it came back as it failed within two, three years, you know, as far as taking care of it. So we have a, a lot better restoration program than we had in the past years, you know, we're pretty. Um, reactive to any complaints that we get from municipalities, so. I don't see any issue with that.
Or Carl, when, when is it up? It's five years, right?
Yeah, it's five years and uh this one is two years into it, so they would have to carry the trench for three years. It doesn't sound like that um, um, Mr. Gillis is objecting to that and we can make that a condition of the permit. If that's um the intention and vote of the board or, or will of the board.
So my feeling is, uh, like it is extremely rare for me to agree to this. Uh, knowing that you have such a low traffic road, um, and that you are without service right now. Um, but please realize that it, it's not about you. It's about my role to protect the town role. The town roads and how much we put into them. And as long as um Columbia is willing to go on for that. Full time, then I will give you my vote.
Great, thanks Nancy. Uh, Mark?
I, I, I would say I'm comfortable with this, especially with Columbia Gas saying they'll take it through the end of the moratorium. I've looked at some of the work. Columbia Det- Gas has done over the last few years and they've done some really good work trenching and patching uh some of the roadway, so. I, I, I have a good level of faith that they'll uh take care of that roadway and it will be uh, you know, good for the duration.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. David?
Uh, just to clarify, there is a gas line in the roadway on William Street. And is that on the north or south side of William Street?
That's on the north side, so it's alongside opposite the house.
Okay. All right, but it, so it, um. Um, is there? Is it better to go all the way across? Uh, Mr. Mattson, um, what is, what's the criteria? Is it better to go all the way across with that? Or will the seam be uh? Drunk by the vehicle, uh. Um, the, the, the steam that's uh parallel with the uh tra- lane of traffic. Is it better that it go all the way across or is it better that the? Is the steam location in such a place that it won't be uh constantly bombarded with the, the car tires?
It, it sounds as though this one's going to go entirely across the road so that the seams would run. Perpendicular to the uh, to the roadway itself. Um, so they would, they would, they would just have to ensure that the uh, the seams and the joints are all. They apply the emulsion seal to the joints to keep them intact.
Okay, so when you, when it's on the opposite side of the street, you have them go all the way curb to curb?
In the trench area, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And no further comment from me, being uh, if there's no further discussion or questions, uh, would hear a motion?
I will uh make a motion to grant the request of Matt and Nicole Murphy. For the street opening permit at twenty William Street, which is under moratorium and will be um. Will be. Looked after or agreed to be, uh, what, what's the word I'm looking for?
Maintained?
Maintain to the town's um. Level of okayness. Until the moratorium's over.
I'll second that.
Fantastic. We have a motion and a second. We'll proceed via roll call vote. Jim O'Neil?
Level of okayness. Is that a technical term, Nancy?
Absolutely.
Engineering.
The bomb term.
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Ben, aye. Motion passes five zero zero. They're calling Matt. Thank you very much for coming on tonight.
So much.
Thank you.
Good luck and stay informed this winter.
Thank you.
Best of luck. Okay. Moving on, we have a vote to request Columbia Gas to street opening permits at thirteen Eleanor Road, one eighty Saints, one eighty Stone Street, two sixty one Stone Street, which are all under moratorium, so um Jim Johnson, did you want to, do we want to walk through these separately or what's the best way to uh to handle them? Jim, you're on mute.
Sorry. Um, Eleanor Road was paved by Larissa Cor- Corf in twenty nineteen and um the other road was paved, what's that? Is that Stone Street, Carl?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Stone Street was Sunshine Paving in two thousand eighteen.
Okay, so two thousand eighteen. Um, Carl, any comments on these ones?
Uh, Rick provided correspondence to the board and our requirements are similar to um to what we just discussed on uh William Street. Um, and said, uh, we are, I won't say that we're excited about this, but where we were, we will go along with it as long as the trench is restored um to our specifications.
Why do we want them?
The services uh through the chair, um, the services and Mr. Gillis may add to this, I believe if he's still on. Uh, but I believe there's service replacements. In other words, the gas company, these houses are served with gas currently. But the gas company um must replace them um under their own maintenance program.
Under their own maintenance program?
Mm-hmm.
So what is triggering that they need maintenance? When they're in moratorium as opposed to noting when our streets get done as we notify them? And then being proactive and doing it then? Is there a gas leak?
Uh, the these have no leaks associated with them. Uh, there's actually a four year program that we just started this year is to replace uh identified high pressure beer steel services of inside meter fits.
How about that on roads that are getting before they get paved?
Uh, this initiative didn't exist uh last year when these were getting uh paved.
So could we identify some that are getting down on roads that need to be paved as opposed to one that was done last year?
Yes, we can. But these are in our plan to to get replaced. Uh, so within four years, we need to have all these completed, it's like I think about just shy of five hundred of them in our Brockton territory, which is forty two municipalities that we serve.
So to me, as I said before, I take our roads very seriously and the amount of money that we put taxpayer money into maintaining them and giving them good roads. And as far as I'm concerned, if it's not any sort of leak or any sort of immediate hazard, which then you have the right to do it anyway. I would suggest that you find roads that need to be paved or that are not in moratorium because otherwise, to me, we are doing a huge disservice to the taxpayer. But that's so, as I said, there's a difference between me letting someone do this and me feeling that it it's it's insulting because our engineering department spends a lot of time reaching out to the utilities companies, letting them know, we go through a bidding process, we do a lot of things to give our taxpayers great roads. And to me, something like this is not okay.
Thank you, Nancy. Uh, Jim O'Neill?
Is is there any risk to not doing this if we deferred it? Is is there any risk to deferral?
Oh, I believe you're on mute there, Mr. Gillis.
Sorry, I was, uh. I would say there's a little additional risk there. Obviously, that's why we're doing it. The this is coming out of the Merrimack Valley incident, uh. All the investigation on the gas company, just uh natural gas uh operators throughout the country is identifying Rick risks within their system, so obviously, high pressure gas up to ninety nine pounds in this situation. Uh, with the gas meter inside the house does pose additional risks uh when the majority of the houses do have gas meters located outside. So it's been like this for fifty years, uh forty years. Uh, can I say something's going to happen? I can't, you know, it's is the risk minute? There is a little additional risk there, but I can't quantify that.
And are there are there any other houses on these streets that you're going to be coming back to us on in another year? To do the asimilar thing and ask for another street opening permit?
Uh, I've not, I haven't seen the entire list. I'd have to get my hands on the entire list and sort it out. Like I said, it's like five to six hundred for the for the area that we serve down in Brockton, forty two municipalities. So I can get that list sorted by wall pole and and uh look at it that way. Yes, we do work closely with you guys with the paving list and replacement infrastructure before you pave and trying to fix these leaks, but this is something that just literally got rolled out in uh three months ago. So it's new to us. Uh, these are targeted services we're going after, so.
I mean, it feels to me like there's there's no need to to upgrade. You're telling us that there is very minimal risk. And um to Nancy's point, we just paved the roads. Um what would be the problem with just waiting until the five year moratorium is up and then coming in and doing it?
Well, I would, I would, wouldn't be opposed to that, so. Uh, that's definitely an option, you know, instead of it comes off moratorium in two years, then we just proceed to the to the back.
And if there's no no risk, then I I don't know why we wouldn't just do that to Nancy's point. You know, respect the taxpayers and the the money we pay in these roads. There is a reason that we do moratoriums and uh, you know, if we can't do a better job of syncing up uh these types of replacements at the time that we're doing the paving, then I I think we need to respect the moratorium unless there's a good reason not to, so. That's it for me, Ben.
Mr. Chairman, if if you would, um, I I would like to address, this is Carl Bald of Towne near, and I just want to address the fact that that question was actually asked of somebody else in the gas company with whether these, whether doing these services um is optional enough to let them ride out the moratorium, and we got a different answer. Um, so that puzzles me because we would not have forwarded this down here if we had understood that this could wait the uh moratorium period out. If we were led to believe that it must be done.
Well, you know, I just, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, I I uh I I would want to know the answer to that question, you know, if if someone were to tell me that there is real risk here. Having, you know, ex- you know, having, you know, the experience of the Merrimack Valley, then then I would think differently about this. So I've got now conflicting, you know, data that we're working with here. I I I personally would want to know what the real answer is.
Yeah, well, I'm the one in charge of these, so you're getting the right answer.
Okay.
Uh, we do have a four year plan. We've uh, we have a plan uh two hundred and eight to execute this year of the two hundred and eight. Uh, numerous have been kicked across, kicked back to us to throughout other municipalities, four roads under moratorium.
Yeah, so I I guess go find roads that, you know, are out of moratorium or about to get paved and do those and come back and see us.
You know, we had all right? We are noting that in our plan and uh we're not going to forget about them. Those are just going to get pushed further back.
All right, thank you.
Great. Uh, Mark?
Yeah, I um, I'm sort of conflicted on this one. Everything I've read about higher pressure gas lines, feeding meters inside homes says they should be replaced, so. Um, you know, if Brian is saying they can wait, then I think they should wait. You know, Brian, if you want to go check that out and come back to us, I'd be uh more than willing to, you know, hear any any differing opinion you may have in a couple of weeks, but um, I'm I'm willing to go along with what the board's talking about, do the moratorium unless you want to come back and uh convince us otherwise.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Nancy, were you satisfied with your previous comments? I skipped you there, but you, are you all set?
Uh, yes, yes, because the and that in the past, um, from what we've heard is that when certain safety features are triggered, you, they don't even come before us. So if, as far as if it is, you know, a routine maintenance prevention sort of trick, um safety, I mean, um, trade up, then I think that we need to respect the moratorium. But if you wanted to come back to give us the education that there is a higher risk in what that risk is, then I am definitely willing to listen to it. But if there's about two hundred and eighteen of these and they're all at the same risk, let's definitely start with the one, the streets that are not in moratorium or about to be paved.
Great, thanks. And uh, lastly, David?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Um, so I I don't want to say the exact number. You said that these are high pressure gas lines. Um, are they higher pressure than the normal residential line? Why are they a different pressure or or are they a higher pressure?
It's sa- same pressure that's running out into the street. So in the town of Wallpole, we operate one system, uh, that's a ninety nine pound system, so the maximum blowing operating pressure would be up to ninety nine pounds. Uh, generally, probably only running about uh anywhere from sixty to eighty five, ninety pounds.
So does the regulator meter change the pressure for inside the house?
Yep, yeah, see, regulators dropping it down to inches of water comb, seven inches of water comb.
To seven?
Yep. About seven pounds, seven inches of water comb, so totally different. So if you take a deep breath and exhale, that's about seven inches of water comb pressure lines.
Okay, so the problem with these particular services is that the high pressure is occurring. It that pipe, the meter's inside, so the high pressure is is actually inside the home on.
So any any side, any meter that's located in inside the house does pose additional risk. Obviously, you see Merrimack Valley, that was different. That was low pressure, no regulators, but the risk is if someone was digging out in the street or doing some landscaping and with a machine and pulled that service. Well, usually when it gets pulled and out in the yard or in the street, you're you're literally separating it from uh the ser- could be the meter fit inside of a house piping. So you could potentially have uh high pressure gas going into the house.
Absolutely, and I I appreciate that Columbia Gas is doing this and that they're recognizing that these uh need to be retrofitted and 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 taken out of the homes. And I would um, I would uh support uh it doing this uh immediately and and absolutely doing all of the other, I I I'm sure you have a number of other ones where you haven't had to come to this board to do that changeover. And you have those to work on as well. Um, I I I hope you actually make ours a priority and get uh all of them done. Um, including the ones here and and therefore I would uh I would move to uh to allow Columbia Gas to uh have an exception for the moratorium for uh these properties.
Here we have a motion. Is there a second? No second. I don't have anything to add to the discussion. I didn't entertain any other motions. I have the board board want to put them forward.
And if I could?
Please.
So just before we go ahead with the next motion, I just want to go back to Brian one more time and if you thought there was risk here, you would change those meters today. You wouldn't come to us, you'd go and change them if you thought there was risk. Is that true?
Correct, so I I can only avoid coming to you guys uh without getting approval, for cutting the road under moratorium technically if it was if if it was an existing leak out there. So if it was a grade one or even a two plus, we have to act on a grade one leak immediately on spot. Two plus, we got a, I think it's thirty days now or twenty one days to remediate that. Or else we're following the normal process of filing for a permit, uh, getting approval from you guys to go cut the roadway and then going out and acting on the job.
And so you're satisfied that we can wait until the moratorium is up without undue risk?
Well, uh, it's a tough question. Uh, like I said, we got it's a four year plan, so if the risk was tremendous, would have, would be doing all the four year plan right now immediately. So that's why it's dispersed amongst four years. If you guys deny it, then there's really not much I can do other than wait the, wait until the road becomes out of moratorium. Uh, the services have been in place for years historically. Um, I don't know the years on some of these, probably in the fifties. On the main, on this particular street, uh, sorry, I'm back on one of the other projects. Probably in the fifties, so some old infrastructure. Historically, that's how they were done. They've been like that for a while.
Ben and Jim, um, not to cut you off, Brian, but do you mind if we table this and just Carl, me and Rick can get together with Brian and I get what Jim's getting to and I understand where David's coming from. I'm concerned with risk, obviously. I don't want to be in the same situation as the town managers in Andover and North Andover, uh, something were to happen, so. Could we just, would you mind table in it until nine one and we bring it back if and we work with Brian on this?
Please, please do that.
I was going to tell you a question, but are there other ones on those streets? Like does Nor and does um Stone Street have other services?
I would have to look. So what I can do is get my hands on that that full list. I've only seen the two hundred and eight that we were supplied for this this season. Uh, so I can get that full list sorted by wall pole and we can come back and get together uh and look at those specific locations. But that full list would have all those inside high pressure meter fits that are beer steel.
Right, so you're telling me you got this year's list and so next year's list could have their neighbors?
Potentially, but what we've been finding as we're doing these the past two months, we've been start, we've started these is they've been all coming in in like groups together, so we've been out on the same street like day after day doing the neighbors. But
Yeah.
Question, we would have to get you a little more research to get you a accurate answer on that.
Yeah, I would actually want to see that they were based on priority and I would want to see them actually done in the same neighborhood so that every summer, you're not just going back to a different neighborhood, that the same neighborhood and ripping it up. As opposed to doing them in groups.
Yeah, I think we can just go back, Jim, and and get additional information, you know, from their, from the company. Get an organized plan on it with Carl and and everybody. Sounds like a good idea.
Okay. We're back on the next.
Sorry, Nancy?
Oh, I'll make a motion to table this to our next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will do a roll call vote as is our want. Jim O'Neill?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Ben, aye. So five zero zero, motion passes to table this until our next meeting. All right, moving forward.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. Gillis. Appreciate your uh information.
Anything you need, we'll be going to work with you guys. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Uh, moving to our new business, first item. Discussion uh on the proposed warrant articles. Uh, Jim Johnson, you want to walk us through what you, what you had in mind there, which articles we'd like to discuss?
Sure, um, if you if you like, if you, um, I'd like to just quickly run through the articles, give the board a quick update on a couple of them. You know, and um, obviously, this is really, we're closing the warrant tonight. They need to be vetted by council, which I'm hoping she can get me back. Um, you know, within the next two weeks or so. My biggest concern, and I'm going to recommend that the board not sign this until um, I really don't know when we're going to have a town meeting. Um, I've reached out to Dan, we talked on Friday. He hasn't made the call on this one yet. Uh, the way I think we're we're standing is two options really. Um, have it on the town, uh, the football field like we did uh this past spring, which worked out pretty well on a Saturday. I've gone forward and booked all the Saturdays in October for the uh high school football field. And uh also Sunday. And, uh, also Sundays too. Um, and have it there or do it virtually. I just don't think right now, um, the town meetings are exempt, but I think we need to be setting examples with the whole town. And I don't think it'd be a great idea to get, uh, two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five people in a, a room. Uh, with the current standards, we did the math a couple of weeks ago, really only eighty-three people could fit in the high school auditorium. That's really the biggest space we have available to us, so. It's, I think it's either gonna be held virtually or on the football field at some point. And Dan let me know he's gonna make the call. Um, he and I are actually sitting on a webinar tomorrow, uh. With some other town managers and moderators, so more to come on that. But, um, so just to kinda run down the list. Um, we obviously have the, um, operational budget adjustment, that's under article two. Um, that's the end year of budget adjustment for FY twenty-one. Um, right now, I think I might see a couple of small things, uh. I think Liz may need something, uh, to do with early voting. Again, they've expanded that a little bit more. I think, I think Tim Bailey mentioned something to me. We're watching everything pretty close as far as budget adjustments. Um, the article three is grouping all of, uh, the collective bargaining agreements in the, um. Salary schedule into one article, something a little different. It meets the requirements of the charter. We're gonna make every, uh, contract available. Um, prior to town meeting, let the town meeting members see the MOAs and the changes that have been made. But we're gonna just group everything into one article. Uh, then we get into the capital articles, which are all pretty standard. Uh, the infrastructure, the highways, uh, sorry, the roads and the, um, equipment purchases and then the borrowing for the roads. Um, again, all pretty standard right now, um, recommending just about, uh, one point two million or so, um, be used on. On those purchases and everything. We capital started meeting tonight, so, um, we should have a report from them in a couple of weeks. Um, and then we get into, uh, stabilization and OPEB. Uh, I am recommending a substantial amount of money be placed in stabilization. Just about three point five percent of our, our operating budget, so that'll lift stabilization up to, uh. Almost nine million dollars, which gets us close to, uh, uh, about almost ten percent, a little bit more than nine or so percent. Of our operating, because everyone, we just don't know what's happening. As far as the, the state and everything, I think it'd be best to put a lot of money away in our savings. Uh, we have the ability to do it. Um, OPEB, just about, right now, my recommendation is about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand going into stabilization. Uh, sorry, OPEB, uh, article ten gets into the Medicaid reimbursements, the McKinney Vinto. Um, reimbursement in the, the student parking reimbursements. Uh, the assessors are looking for a consultant to, um, bring on to do, uh, their state mandated certification program. We have the PEG access, which wasn't addressed in the, the, uh, fall, the spring, because. Uh, obviously, we only get to three articles there and cable needs some money to operate. And then we get into the inclusionary zoning bylaws. And I'd like to just say, as far as the zoning bylaws, we're gonna refer those to the planning board as quickly as possible. Uh, we have a letter ready to go, just so we meet all the requirements and everything. Uh, so that gets into that article. Um, then we have the, um, the stretch code. Uh, which was again on the spring town meeting, uh, we didn't act on that, but no changes there. That's something your board, um, was comfortable with back, uh, last winter, and I'm assuming you're gonna be comfortable with it again. Um, and the next article is, uh, just expanding, uh, the requirement for limited site plan review to allow. Outdoor dining and entertainment a little bit there, just mostly branches off of what we've been doing, uh, the last. Uh, couple of months here, uh, on a less informal process. It requires basically a, a limited site plan, which is a site plan where myself, Ashley, uh, Mike Yanovich and the department heads get together with the. Uh, mostly people like, uh, the Ravens Nest or Crisp or Jalapenos and. Look, look to see what we can approve by expanding their little footprint outside. Ashley, did I miss anything big on that one? Ashley kinda put that one together. Okay, she's shaking her head no. Thank you. Um, couple of street acceptances, Carl's still working on those. Uh, to finalize everything, but, um, we grouped those into one article, more or less just to streamline things a little bit there. Uh, we get, uh, then we get into some of the citizens petitions, which this year we have five of them. Um, three of them are, we're familiar with, one of them was proposed from Cindy Hoag, which is the stadium event parking. Um, two were proposed from Richard Peeler, which were on the spring, uh, town meeting warrant. Richard also proposed another one, uh, regarding, uh, Norfolk County and taking the pension system. Um, and putting it into the state system and also, um, taking all the, uh, town employees and putting them into the GIC system. And the other citizen petition was, uh, for hardwood engineering. They're proposing a solar farm down off of, uh, South Street. I think that's a, seems like a pretty good project from what I've seen. I've worked, I've had a couple of meetings with those people, nothing's really around there. And, um, it's, uh, they're looking to just more or less expand on there with. Without having to do a housing project or anything, it seems like a good project. So overall, that's kind of a thirty thousand foot view on these articles. Uh, much more to come, but Ben, do you wanna ask if anybody has any questions?
Yeah. Yeah, let's, yeah, so I, I had asked him to, to run through all of that, not only for information for us and everybody watching. Um, but also to talk a little bit about it and answer questions, so why don't we just go, Nancy, please, go ahead.
Um, so a few things about it, um, stabilization, I think. The climate that's going on, obvious, is such a great idea and. You know, Jim, you, your financial team has done a great job. I know a few years ago. It was, you know, the hot topic of, you know, why do we save so much for rainy days? Well. The never event, guess what? It's here. And I think all of you have been doing such a fabulous job. I mean. There are families in town that have been fed, there are seniors that are being looked out for, there are town workers. You know, we are keeping the economy going and that is the most important thing and you guys have done a tremendous job. And then as far as the restaurants and, you know, Ashley, um, building, permitting. Everybody has done an amazing job. I mean, you know. There are small businesses, they are what keep our town going. And I think the, you know, support that we have given them to be able to just go right ahead and keep their business going. And fit into the constantly changing parameters have been awesome. I'm, I'm sure though, the one thing that I still think is a little bit bizarro is the, you know, drinks to go in a cup, that. I'm sure Chief, you think that's kind of a weird thing too, but whatever, um, twenty twenty's weird. And, um, that, um, otherwise, just, you know, catching up with site plans and making sure everybody's got room. And even neighbors helping neighbors, you know, I heard, uh, for Bobby Conrad, the bank has reached out and helped him to do it, you know. Jalapenos, we have helped them with sidewalk space, the DPW just moving things around to get everybody. Um, I think what everybody in this town has done for each other and to keep business going and just to be business friendly is amazing. Then when we get over to one thing although about stadium parking. Um, you know, years ago, when I was at the PAC at Boyd's School, I was there in front of. Town meeting and trying to push this along and get that parking, because I think it's an excellent way to make revenue. I'm so excited that the church is doing this. Um, you know, I, I had reached out and said if they needed any help, I'd be happy to help them, because I've been down this road trying to do this for them before. Before the school, but, um, you know, we all need to. South Waffle feels that impact and if that can help the church. You know, I think it's important and we're all neighbors and we've got to do that. Then as far as the citizens petition for pension, I mean, I understand that people wanna help out and stuff like that, but. Year after year, your team, Jim, has done such a great job of going with the best idea. Um, as far as financially being backed up. So the citizens petition, I just, I feel like we just went down this road. And not to mention with contracts and things like that, it to be in breach of contracts. Um, I just, I have some trouble with that. But otherwise, I mean, considering everything else that's going on. You guys are staying on top of everything, you guys are every there, every, there every day getting your job done and. It, it's very impressive and the people in this town have been able to reach out to all of you guys and it's amazing. That's my soapbox.
Thank you, Nancy. Jim O'Neill.
Yeah, without, uh, repeating everything Nancy said, uh, which I totally agree with. I'll hit on stabilization, which is obviously critical for the reasons Nancy has, has raised. I also like the, uh, stadium, uh, parking overlay. Uh, that just makes a lot of sense to me and, and it's a simple thing for us to do and, and so I'm very much supportive of that. Uh, yeah, there's a lot of deja vu in this, uh, warrant, because so much of it was deferred from the prior town meeting as we. Tried to, you know, really simplify the, the town meeting we just had. Um, so much of this is, is, uh, is similar to us or the same to us. Uh, I think the, uh, your point, Jim, on the, uh, inclusionary zoning bylaw and getting that to planning board ASAP is a very good idea. Just to make sure that we have no, you know, protocol snafus here. And, uh, you know, it's a, it's a good-looking warrant, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff for us to debate in here. I'm sure the FinCon will be taking it up, you know, and then not to just in the future. And, uh, I look forward to the debate, so, uh, thank you for taking us through that, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Mark?
I think Jim and Nancy did a good job summarizing what's on the warrant and, uh, I look forward to having a discussion on all those items.
Yeah. Okay, and, uh, David?
Yes, um, I had several comments. One is that perhaps, uh. Could reach out to Mr. Kraft and see on an away, uh, football weekend if we might be able to use his covered football field. Uh, for a location for our meeting, that, um, is a possibility to have it outside the confines of the town of Walpole. The second thing is, um, I would like to, um, reiterate what I said in the spring regarding, um, town meeting and. In that if we can perhaps create along with Walpole Media, uh, little, uh. Uh, a list server, an internet, uh, uh, a. A packet of videos for each warrant item that shows all of the, for instance, for the inclusionary zoning, uh. Uh, item. Have a spot on our website where a town meeting member can click on that and see, uh. Lists of all of the appro, the meetings that occurred, uh, in regards to it with, uh, videos attached. With minutes and agendas attached, so that, um, as many of those questions can be answered. By, uh, the town meeting members and ask town meeting members to do a little more of their homework. Um. Sorry, hold on. A little more of homework at home by, uh, accessing these files. Um, having documents in these files and, um, reports and things like that. So, and an opportunity to ask questions on the, in that area. So that, um, town meeting members can have before the meeting, um, uh. Access to, uh, a lot more information. And if they have a question and have, have the town answer that question in this file area. And so that town meeting members, uh, can have a lot of their, uh, questions addressed before the meeting, uh, even occurs. Um, I, I think that would speed things up and also, um. Especially if we have an outdoor meeting that, uh, you know, it could be a cool night, um. Um, for, for town meeting or whatever, um. Those are my concerns. As far as the specific issues of, of the items, uh, on the town meeting agenda, I will. We are going to, uh, we're gonna have an opportunity to speak to each of those at a later time, is that correct, Mr. Barrett?
Yep, for sure. We'll, we'll go through them all individually and, and debate the merits and discuss and ask questions, so.
Okay, that's, that's some of my comments.
Yep. Okay, great. Thank you, David. Okay, and so then to, to wrap that up, uh, Jim Johnson, I guess the only question I had is. Um, specifically referencing the articles that need to go to the planning board and require, uh, public hearing. Uh, is that a notice that can only be sent to them once the warrant is closed? Or do we, do we know what legal procedural, um, way to go is there?
We did some digging on this, so the last couple of days. Um, and so I believe it is, once we officially get, um. We're gonna mark it as of the time we received the citizens petition, Cindy Hoag's, uh, because that has to do with, um, uh, zoning. There's really three zoning articles that are on there. It's, um, the parking, it's the, um, the housing one and the over, the, the, actually, it's four. It's the overlay district for hardwood engineering also and the one that, uh, Mike and Ashley worked on. So we have a letter ready to go that we're gonna send off tomorrow.
Okay, so that doesn't require a vote of this board in order to do that?
No, it requires notification. And, uh, you, you and Ashley worked on that, yep, right, today?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Jim, make a motion to close the twenty twenty fall town meeting warrant?
We have a second?
Or Ben?
Perfect. Yeah, we have a motion and a second. We will now, uh, have a roll call vote. To close the town meeting warrant. Jim O'Neill?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Ben, aye, five zero zero. The fall town meeting warrant is now closed. Five zero zero, all right. Moving forward. Vote request of Gina Rodriguez to use Adams Farm on September fifth, twenty twenty for a birthday celebration. Trusting that the board members have read the application in their packages prior to the meeting. I would open it up to discussion if anyone had any or accept motions.
I'll make a motion.
Nancy.
To approve the request of Gina Ro, Gina Rodriguez to use Adams Farm on September fifth, twenty twenty. For a birthday celebration, subject to them complying with all COVID nineteen guidelines that are in place at the time of the event. I hope the numbers go up and you get to have a bigger party.
I'll second it.
Absolutely. Uh, now we will take our roll call vote. Jim O'Neill?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
David?
Did I misread this? Was it for a wedding or for a birthday? I don't.
Birthday celebration.
Okay. I thought it's for a wedding ceremony only, was my missing, is that another application?
Um, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so, yeah, so they had originally applied back in March to have a wedding, um, and they ended up changing it. They reduced the numbers for the wedding and then ended up changing it again. I'd put a memo in to say that they're now just gonna have a birthday celebration instead of the wedding.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I'm looking at the application, it says wedding ceremony only, which I was happy with, that it was just gonna be the ceremony, not even a reception. Um. Um, and it's saying guests for the event are eighty. Okay, all right.
Dave, to clarify, that's why we added to comply with all COVID nineteen gu, um, guidelines, because those. Numbers can change at the will of the governor. Or I shouldn't say at the will of the governor, um, science-based on the numbers that the governor then decides to change.
Okay, thank you.
And your vote would be, David?
No.
No. Ben? Yes. Four, one, zero, the motion passes.
Would you like me to make a motion to ratify and sign the memo, memorandum of agreements with the DPW union, the clerical union, the library union and the police union?
Yes. Yes, please. So moved.
So moved.
Is there, is there, is there further? Yeah, is there any, uh, further discussion from the members on this subject? Being that there is none, we'll move to the roll call vote.
Uh, no.
Jim O'Neill? Oh.
I'd like to hear more about the, the, the agreements.
Sure, so Jim Johnson can answer any questions you may have, David.
Okay, why the difference in, uh. Dollar increases between uh, between the library uh, union and the clerical union?
Um, all, all, all of these groups are separate bargaining groups. I can't bargain with each one of them. Um, each one of them. Went into these negotiations looking for something um, different than the other. Some wanted more, some wanted less. Um, we finalized the um, library union back, I think in beginning of March, late February. Um, and this is just really the way everything worked itself out.
Good.
I do believe we discussed them in executive session when we were discussing negotiations.
Yeah, we've been, we've been through these. Any other questions, David?
Hold up.
Okay, great. Uh, so we'll go ahead with our roll call vote, being that there's a motion in a second. Jim O'Neil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
David?
No.
Ben, yes. Four, one, zero, the motion passes.
I'll make a motion um, to approve the request of Davino. Winery for annual weekday entertainment license and seasonal weekday, Sunday live music license.
I'll second that.
Being that there's a motion in a second, any further discussion from the members? Being that there is none, proceed with the roll call vote. Jim O'Neil?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Ben, aye, five zero zero, the motion passes.
I'll make a motion to the naming of the Route one A Field Complex to be South Wapple Sports Complex.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussions from the board members? Being that there is none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Jim O'Neil?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
David?
abstain.
Ben, aye. Four, zero, one, the motion passes. Thank you, Nancy.
Move to the consent agenda. I will make a motion to accept a um, donation. From Nadim Yanis and Romania Alam. To community policing for fifty dollars. Did I say that right, John? Was I close?
Yeah, sounded good to me.
Alright.
I'll, I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. We'll proceed with a roll call vote. Jim O'Neil?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Ben, aye, five zero zero, the motion passes. And we are now at the town administrator update with Jim Johnson, just a hair before nine eighteen.
Sure.
Go ahead, Jim.
Just a couple of items at this time. Uh, COVID update, we uh, we have two hundred and seventy-three total confirmed positive cases in Walpole. Uh, two hundred and sixty-eight cases have completed monitoring. Five cases are undergoing monitoring. Just to give you some perspective, two weeks ago. Um, we had uh, two hundred and sixty-three, and we only had uh, three undergoing monitoring. So our numbers have gone up by about ten over the last two weeks. Um, uh, town meeting, I, I talked about town meeting a little bit during the warrant. Um, as soon as Dan makes the call on what he's comfortable with, um, you know, obviously, I'll keep the board involved in that. And uh, what we're doing going forward uh, with everything. Capital's already started meeting. Um, Ed Fosberg is the chair once again. And uh, he's plugging away. Um, the, for the most part, that committee is intact from what it was last year. Uh, so the members uh, have been on there for a little while. Uh, MSBA update. I spoke to Brian Jarvis regarding the, the middle school project. Brian explained that the project is moving along. Um, Compass is working on uh, gathering info on the various sites that are being considered. Next big item is the education program, which needs to be developed with the school officials and the consultants, but. Um, Brian and his team understands all the work that uh, Bridget and her team are going, putting, uh, putting in with the new school year and everything. And the hybrid learning program, so um, that may take a while. Um, the fields project, that project continues to progress. The turf was placed down for the first field about two weeks ago. Crews continue to stitch the numbers and the lines in on those fields. The second turf field, I think it, they might have started it this week, laying the grass, the, the green down for that one. Um, work on the grass fields continues to progress. Last week, they uh, had the backstops in for the most part with the poles. Uh, and the drainage was getting finalized. Uh, it's expected that they're gonna start spreading the loam. This week or next, and seeding in the grass here is expected to take place in early September to catch the good growing season. So uh, much more to come on that over the next upcoming weeks, and that's about it for me.
Excellent. Excellent. Thanks, Jim. That's fantastic. Yeah, any uh, board members have a question or comment? Nancy?
I have one comment, and I just wanna give a little public service announcement of my own. I have spent from mid-March till mid-June. Completely exposed all the time while I'm at work to COVID patients. It's been in the air. I do procedures in high aerosol intubation, extubations of patients. COVID positive patients, known patients, in and out of rooms, putting IVs in, taking on and off my PPE. I have not so far gotten COVID. I don't have antibodies. I, I've had antibodies checked twice, have not had antibodies. My PPE has worked. I have a nurse friend who I grew up with in Walpole, who lives in Rentham. Who pretty much does the same thing that I do and was the same way until her daughter went to a high school party. And caught COVID there and drank out of her mother's water bottle. And her mother caught COVID, my friend. And it can happen that easy. PPE is important. Our families, our loved ones, who we bring it home to. It's, it's serious. I've never, ever, ever worked in a hospital. That has had over the last thirty years, the entire hospital filled with the same diagnosis. So it's not fake. It's definitely real. It's sad and scary because it kills people. And you don't know who it's gonna kill. Yes, it has lingers with comorbidities. Comorbidities of diabetes, hypertension, obesity, but it also kills. People that you don't think it should and you don't think that it would, and they're extremely healthy. So as we start to go back to school and we get our kids together, and it's gonna happen in. Small cohorts, big cohorts, they're gonna be kids. They are going to do what they wanna do. They are going to do what they can try to get away with. No matter how much parenting we do, even though we're all stuck at home, they're still kids. And even kids that are their parents, they know what their parents have been doing. Um, but just remember and take care of our elderly. Take care of our family. You know, take care of our family members that are on medications, that put them at higher risk. And, you know, hopefully, you know, we'll get there someday, but it might just take a little while, and we've done a really good job so far. Walpole has less COVID patients than the hospital that I, um. Less COVID positive people than the hospital that I am employed at as far as employees caught. So, you know, keep doing, keep plugging along, everybody, and we can get there eventually. That's it.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
Really well said, Nancy. Thank you, and thank you for everything you are doing. Uh, while I'm at that, we have the chief, uh, chief Carmichael and chief Baylor was on earlier. I mean, you guys are all heroes in my book, so thank you.
Alright, very good. Uh. We are now at the point in our agenda where we will be. Uh, in moving to executive session for purpose three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the same, uh, and the position of the public body and the chair so declares. And we will be uh, exiting this Zoom to have our uh, executive session within a separate Zoom. And we will not be returning to the public Zoom uh, until our next regularly scheduled meeting. So be that as it may, uh, we will take a roll call vote to move to executive session for that purpose. Jim O'Neil?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Ben, aye, five zero zero. We'll now move to executive session. Thank you to those who have watched. Have a good night.
Good night.